Got it. Okay, all right, I'm gonna call the City of Essex Junction Council meeting to order for November 12th. First item on the agenda is any agenda additions or changes, any from staff?
No, I would just like to point out for the record, though, that we do have Councilmember Marcus Serta participating just on Zoom as an observer. He's not actually participating in the meeting tonight. Just so the record keeper is aware of that.
Thank you. Counselors, any agenda additions or changes? Okay, and we'll move on to public to be heard. I'll start with folks at Lincoln. Is there anybody in the public that would like to comment?
Public comment? Come on up, state your name for the record.
I'm Stephen Willie Patnose. Very quickly, I'd like to say that I'm still opposed to renewing the cannabis cultivation license at A-Taff. There you go. Another topic, though, that came to mind recently is that there was a long discussion on Front Porch Forum about water bills and that they've gone up quite a bit. And although people reacted, I think, more than the bills have gone up. I look back through my payments over the last few years, and interestingly, for minimum usage, you know, which we pretty much always have minimum, the, the cost has gone up by like thirty to forty percent in the last couple of years, which, you know, seems kind of high. I do know, I recall that there have been discussions about regional water districts, I think, additional facilities for, well, I'm not quite sure what, but water-related stuff, right? And I haven't taken the time to look through all of that stuff, but it definitely does seem to be a surprise. And the reaction to it is that it's, it's essentially a hidden extra tax. And so there's at least a perception problem. There might be a, an actual problem that we're, that we're having kind of unreasonable raises or increases in our costs to live here. So I just thought I'd bring it up. I'm not sure if it's a, I'm not sure how much the city council can do about it. But it may be helpful to, I don't know, have an explanation of what's happened, or, you know, it kind of exactly what these changes or improvements to the system or repairs, whatever it is, have actually done to the bills.
Steve, there was a post that went out yesterday in Front Porch, or Monday, in Front Porch Forum that explained what the increases were and why. So you might have missed that. It's also on the website, too, if, if you can't find it on Front Porch Forum. And Regina, I don't know if you wanted to add anything else to that?
No, it does, there's really broke down between the four different accounts, water, wastewater, sanitation, and stormwater, which all are on there now. You know, I will say one thing that was done this last year is we took a look at multiple staff do work in the funds, in those utility funds, as well as in the general fund where you pay your taxes. And we took a look at where they were spending their time and tried to make sure that it was accounted correctly in the right spot. So some of that shifting happened, which is also what happened with the stormwater as well. We created utility for the first time. And so that work really was unfunded in total, but it lived in the general fund and moved over to the stormwater fund. So I think that is part of the, part of the reason, and that's part of why it's in the, what we put in the explanation that we put out yesterday.
Great, thank you.
I think after you, after you read that, Steve, if you have other questions, certainly feel free to reach out to myself, Regina. Any other comments in the room?
One, no, doesn't appear to be.
Okay, anyone online? Give it a second, I'm not seeing any hands. Okay, all right, we're gonna move on to business item 5A, which is acting as the Cannabis Control Commission regarding the outdoor cultivator tier-one small cultivator for Trichome VT.
This is in your packet. This cannabis license has been in your packet in the past. Typically, it's under the consent agenda. And in the past, for this particular project, the Development Review Board decision is that the cannabis could exist, exist on this property. This has gone through a number of years of litigation, and at this point, we have a case, court case, court decision from the state where it has given more authority to the municipality to regulate cannabis. So that a notice of violation was issued, that went to the Development Review Board. The Development Review Board agreed, and essentially now this is coming forward in front of you folks. And as a reminder, the sole authority of the council in this case, acting as the Local Cannabis Control Commission, is to simply say, does it meet your zoning or does it not meet your zoning? You have a decision from your DRB here in the packet that says essentially that it does not. So the recommendation here is to, let me get to the exact wording of it. To deny the license renewal and revoke the local cannabis license for Trichome. This essentially will be a decision that we then send on to the State Vermont Cannabis Control Commission. And we will see what they, what they do with it. Really, the, it is a license from the state. Any appeal of that license happens from the state license. We are a, a piece of the puzzle, I'll say.
Thanks, Regina. Are there any questions from the council before I open it to public comment?
I do have a question, Amber. Regina, my understanding is that the State Cannabis Control Board has already approved a license for this property, and so what does that mean? What is our decision? Does it apply? Does it matter?
So before the latest rules changed at the State Cannabis Control Board, whenever a license was issued or renewed at the state level, the local municipalities were notified, and you have forty-five days to act as the Local Cannabis Control Commission on the application. The rules have changed to essentially remove that actual time period. And really what that's done is at any point, three hundred sixty-five days in a year, if there is a license out there from the state, and something goes wrong or comes out of compliance at the local level, then the Local Cannabis Control Commission can then make, provide that information to the State Cannabis Control Board. So they do have the authority to override a municipal decision. So that's why I say, well, see what happens at their, at their level.
I guess I'm trying to understand, after all of the litigation that has occurred with this particular case, and with the Supreme Court ruling that has really changed precedent about what municipalities can do, and the fact that we hadn't ruled on it, that it got approved anyway. So I'll be curious to find out, I'm sure you'll let us know, what happens next. It seems backwards. But I think the rules had always been a little backwards in terms of municipal involvement. So I guess it's not any different from what we've been dealing with, but I just wanted to verbalize that and get it in the minutes so that the board at the state level is aware that it continues to be, municipalities continue to be at a disadvantage in this process.
Excellent. Any other questions? Tim?
Nope, nothing from me.
All right, I will open it up for public comment and just recognize that this was tabled from our last meeting, and so we did have a few comments at the last meeting. So those are on the record. Does anybody have any public comment for this discussion item? Online? Not seeing any, so I'll bring it back to the council. Motion?
I'll move that the Essex Junction Local Cannabis Control Commission deny the license renewal and revoke the local cannabis license for Trichome VT's tier-one outdoor cultivation.
Give it a second.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
I don't believe Brian is there, right?
He is not.
Okay, thank you. All right, that motion carries. Thank you, guys. All right, we're gonna move on to 5B, which is Winuski Valley Park's district presentation and discussion. And I see we have Nick online and Lauren, and I saw Mr. Tyler in the room. Take it away.
Hi, thanks, thanks for your time tonight. I'm usually there in person. The roads looked a little sketchy, so honestly, that's why I'm doing it remote, but I typically like to be there. And this is our annual check-in with you folks, as we are, for those less familiar with us, we're a municipal district that is in the business of owning and managing conservation parks. And you're one of eight municipalities in that district, and each year we provide an annual report for the, the fiscal year that ended on, on June 30th, and we what our budget is going to be for the next fiscal year, which we, we've provided to you folks. And this budget was devised in coordination with the Board of Trustees, which I think George can tell you is very active and very wired into our operation. They meet monthly, and so they had a lot of input. We, we go to great lengths to provide efficiencies in our, in our work. And I just wanted, with your indulgence, I can give you like a five-minute overview of what's going on with us, and then people just jump in at any time, George and/or Lauren. Introduce Lauren is on the screen here. She's our operations manager. Our other full-time employee is Tim Larned. He's our park superintendent, and he's not with us tonight. So, and then George is, is your representative to our board. We've been around for over fifty years. When this, this organization started, I think there was a, a real, it was a reaction to the, the, the opening up of thousands of acres of farmland and concerns about overdevelopment and the desire to create a contiguous park at the base of Winuski River. And it's evolved greatly, especially in recent years, where our attention to water quality and flood resilience has really become pretty paramount in that a lot of our properties have extensive floodplains, floodplain forests, shoreline and so forth, and we actually see, we, we, we like these properties, and with those rare public entities that leans into wetlands and floodplain, that's a big part of our operation is to keep those in, in good shape, and all of our parks are open to the public, which is at no cost. And so we have a dual mission of ecological protection and public recreation. And it is through the public recreation that we get the constituency to understand the importance of the parks that we work with. So it's been, it's, it's a great system. We try to utilize a variety of, of means to bring in extra income to our operations budget to lessen the, the burden on our, our member towns. That includes leasing. We've got, we lease to Forest Preschool at, at the Ethan Allen Homestead. Also on the Biwi, which is Confederation of, of the four Vermont tribes, operates out of there, Ethan Allen Homestead Museum. And we have two caretaker homes at Colchester Pond Natural Area and Ethan Allen Homestead, which we charge rent and reduce rent and return for caretaking work on the property. And we have a picnic shelter that we rent out for events and parties. It is also a, a growing role of us to be a fiscal agent for our fellow nonprofits. So we actually process grant funds for three or four nonprofits that we work closely with. That's really, for a bunch of reasons, develops really strong relationships and puts us in a really good position and provides good, clean income for us. Our relationship with Essex Junction is, is, has been great over the last few years, as you guys create a community from scratch. Just an astonishing process to be part of, and I just want to express my appreciation for all the people who moved us through that process. As you know, you, within your town, yet we, we have just a, a small slice of Woodside Park is in your town currently. But we are also gonna be, our park superintendent is really energized about working with you folks on Stevens Park, not as an acquisition, but also to help do planning around trails and upgrades and so forth. And Tim was asking me, which school is in which town? Because we have Albert D. Lawton and founders, our, our big-time volunteer groups that have repeatedly come to visit us and that we really look forward to having. I think our challenge will be, over the next few years, we've got several properties that are in different stages of potential acquisitions, so we have to make decisions around that. And sort of the new landscape of federal funding has obviously been challenging, but we, we're not dependent on federal funding for operations, but we do access it for projects and for initiatives. But we found really great support, especially over the last year, as we're all scratching our heads, trying to figure out what's gonna happen next politically, in that the towns, I think, really value the, the, the properties that we manage. So we've been very pleased about the support this year. Like to open, if anyone has any questions or concerns, I've provided you with our annual budget with a breakdown of each line item. We have a new annual report that we, a new format for our annual report this year, which had some errors that, thank goodness Regina was able to point out to me. So you have a revised version, just small errors, but, and anyone has any thoughts or comments about the layout, we'd love to know because we put a lot of work into trying to have something that's data-rich and readable and, and professional at the same time. So any questions or concerns, comments?
Nick, I appreciate that. It is short and sweet and, and readable, so I appreciate that for sure. Especially in a packet that has two hundred and fifty pages, so. Definitely appreciate that. I just have one question. I did notice that on the operating revenue, the grant income and the other operational support revenue decreased, which then looks like it, whatever it was decreased by, it kind of ended up in the municipal member support category. Intentional or unintentional, I don't know whether that was or not, but I'm just curious why the, why the decrease in those two particular revenue targets.
Lauren, do you want to jump in on that one?
Yeah, I was just pulling up the, the budget again.
She'll give a better answer. I haven't answered today, but she actually directly developed the budget with the board, so she's our expert.
Yeah, so you're probably noticing that like our actual for FY15 was pretty high for the general income. That was largely in recognition of a former board member that served for many years for South Burlington, passed away this past year, and their family decided to name the park district as a beneficiary in lieu of flowers. And so we got a substantial amount of revenue from, from that, along with just a few other larger-than-expected donations this past year. We, we don't actively solicit donations from park users, but we, you know, get a handful here and there. And for whatever reason, this past year, we got several that were over a thousand dollars, when normally they're only a couple hundred dollars. So we've kept that line item, you know, like kind of low in the budget, just because we don't really know what to expect year to year from that. And the grant.
Yeah, I was looking at more particularly the grant income and the other operational support, which I think saw two thousand and sixteen thousand, I think, difference between your budget at FY26 and 27.
Yes, yeah, grant, grant income, sort of just reflecting that over the past few years, we have not had as much revenue from that, that goes directly into our operating. We do receive a lot of grants that do cover a lot of our staff costs as direct expenses into the grants, but those are tracked outside of our operating revenue because they are project, very specific project-based, and they tend to span multiple fiscal years between when most of our grants are reimbursement-based. So we'll receive, you know, we'll just notice a funding, we do the project, but we have to incur those costs until they are, the full project is complete, and then we get reimbursed for that. So we, again, because they can change pretty drastically year to year, and are sort of hard to predict, you know, when we're like several years out as we make our budgets. You know, the, the grant timelines don't quite line up with that budget timeline, so we keep those, do we track those separately from that? And then I think the other operational support, we saw a decrease in that because that was a few years ago, kind of an aspirational goal to bring in additional funds through various kind of enterprise endeavors that have just realized have not been quite to the aspirational amount that we expected. However, we did recently become through, through the Vermont Community Foundation, again, another person passed away who was a big supporter of us, set up a, I am blinking on the term.
Designated fund.
Designated fund, thank you. Set up a designated fund for the park district. So that amount, you know, is in a designated fund account held by the Vermont Community Foundation, and we do receive a portion from that every year. Right now, we are expecting that to be about six to seven thousand dollars that we will receive from that fund annually. However, we do intend to try to grow the amount. We can put money into the design, towards a designated fund, so the, any general income donations that we receive, we plan to put into that fund, hopefully try to make it, you know, to grow, so then it's, we, the park district gets more back every year.
It's a great tool because it doesn't compete with other entities that fundraise that we work with. But it creates a vehicle by which the principal grows over time, and based on a three-year look back, we get a percentage of that principal on annual basis. So I, I know we're going down a rabbit hole, but we're thrilled because we realized two things. One is, of course, having the money, but also we have a vehicle by which we can really, I think, grow a pretty solid financial component for the park district long-term.
Nice, great. Well, thank you, guys. Tim, Elaine?
I just have two programmatic questions, not budgetary. You mentioned a little bit about, a little bit ago about Stevens Park, and I missed what you had said. Are we working with you guys to think about how to utilize Stevens Park better? What is going on with that?
It, it came up in conversation when we were doing our strategic, we, we're in the middle of a strategic plan, and we, we met with, with city leadership, and you know, Tim had been doing research on what lands were, were open in Essex Junction, and so it came up. We haven't followed up on it specifically yet, but I, but Tim was really energized because he felt like you have this amazing eight-acre resource right smack in the middle of a highly populated area. And so he, before I came to the meeting, said, make sure you mention that we're ready and willing, and, you know, he's been doing trail work for the last twenty-four years, so he knows his stuff. And he, he did do a drive-by, and he felt like there's really some really low-cost things that could be done, but obviously it's, it's done on, on behalf of the city, you know, we're not, we're not coming in, making decisions, we're just offering humans a resource.
It's underutilized for sure, so that's great. My other question is, this is actually not related to Essex Junction, I don't think, but last time you were here, I recall you talking about a new canoe launch off of the water, the river by Global, and I'm curious how that's going or whether it's still happening.
We're, we're trying. We're, we're, we're working with the, the town of Essex. It's, it's a location that's at the bottom where 289 His River Road, and, you know, there's that split in the road, and it's a property that's basically right on the, on the other side, that intersection. It's complicated because there's three properties involved, two different owners, and I'm literally in the throes of putting together a, a pretty large package of information and sharing it with, with the town and with the, the property owner, with the homeowners association, various partners, and saying, this is everything we know about the site and our recommendations. It's, I'm glad you brought that up because finding any location on the Lower Winuski, which could be a potential launch, is, is really quite huge. So we're, we're excited about it. The Vermont Rivers Conservancy is taking some leadership on that as well, which we're thrilled about. Yes, absolutely.
Tim?
I'm all set. Thanks, you covered my.
George, do you want to add anything?
Well, Amber, I'm good. I, I think I want to clarify, I want just one point. I think the last year, we're also looking at a, a property on the Williston side of the river, and that might be what, what you were thinking. Which we're negotiating with Global Foundries, and you, you can take it over. I can't remember all the, the details of where we are right now.
Yeah, it's a twenty-nine acre landlocked, landlocked parcel right on the river, directly across from Global Foundries. And so we've been working for the past few years trying to get access to that parcel through a deeded right-of-way and a, and a parking lot, so we can make, you know, make it a park that functions for the public.
Awesome.
Yep.
Indoor concert venue, George.
Well, thank you, guys. We appreciate you coming and giving us an update.
Yeah, thanks for your time.
Absolutely. Enjoy, enjoy the rest of your night. Good to see you, George. Feel free to stick around if you want.
Thank you.
All right, we're gonna move on to 5C, which is the annual town meeting TV presentation and discussion. I did see Megan. I don't know, is Jordan there as well?
Is Megan here with us? I shouldn't say just Megan. You have a, I, I don't know which page in the packet, the report, but we have submitted a report. Page thirty-seven, great. So hi, my name is Megan Rourke. I am the executive director at CCTV, Center for Media and Democracy, and I am standing in tonight for Jordan Mitchell, who is Town Meeting TV's director. Center for Media and Democracy Houses, Town Meeting TV, CCTV Productions, and the CCTV archives. And Town Meeting TV as part of that is the Government Access Channel covering Burlington, Essex, Essex Junction, Winuski, Williston, South Burlington, Colchester. And services and coverage are allocated based on trust that was established, and that they're based on cable subscriber numbers. So we receive cable subscriber numbers, and we allocate resources to communities based on that because the majority of the money that funds Town Meeting TV comes from cable subscribers. More and more, though, we are leaning on CCTV to help Town Meeting TV diversify revenue sources to support this work. And we'll get to that a little bit, including municipal contributions, which is why we're here today to make that request. In the last fiscal year, Town Meeting TV produced and supported about sixteen hundred programs for member communities, and three hundred and fifteen, one of these programs were municipal coverage. The contract for Essex Junction stipulates that at least The contract for Essex Junction stipulates that at least three meetings a month are produced and one general specific programming is produced. Some of those included ribbon-cutting ceremony to celebrate completion of the Crescent Connector project, a No Kings National Day of Protest, city office renovation walkthrough, and ribbon-cutting ceremony. Those are just a few of the programs. And we encourage you, if there are more general programs that you want covered, to reach out to us directly or through Amber Tebow, who is the trustee at our regular meetings. In addition, through CCTV Productions, municipalities may opt to purchase additional meeting coverage or archiving services. And I think we've spoken to you all about that in the past. And that is that piece. This year, we're requesting Essex Junction municipal contribution of fifteen thousand three hundred and fifteen dollars. That's a five percent increase from last year for general Town Meeting TV operations. This, again, is part of offsetting the decline in cable revenue that supports the majority of the work. Probably the most important thing that I should have led with is thanking Logan for being here. It's one of the things that we do, is help provide the technical support, but we like to build these relationships. And, well, we don't do much, you know, Logan does it all for you. So, thank you. Yeah, yeah. And I, you know, it's like coming home for me to be here, because not only did I grow up in Essex Junction, but this was one of the first meetings that I covered when I worked as a field producer at Town Meeting TV with George, a different George. George Dunbar, yeah. So, yes, I was Logan at that time. So that's our short and sweet presentation. Thank you, Jordan. And if you have any questions for me, I am welcoming them.
Thank you, Megan. Tim, Elaine?
Go ahead, Elaine.
Okay. Hi, Megan. I just wanted to ask, I'm noticing in your report that the revenue from Comcast and Burlington Telecom continues to drop. And it does look like the legislature increased the base funding from the Secretary of State's office. Is that increase offsetting? How much is that increase offsetting the cable company drop?
That specific question, I would love to be able to answer by having such a steel-trap mind.
You can just do a ballpark.
If you look at the revenue summary, you see that, you know, the cable revenue is about, I think if I, if I get it right, the cable revenue is about seventy percent of the Town Meeting TV budget. Municipal revenue overall is a hundred and thirty-three thousand. And the, in this upcoming year, we expect around ninety-nine K from the legislative support overall. So it does offset the decline. I will say the Town Meeting TV budget has carried a negative, has carried a deficit. Usually, we try to balance that by just continuing to make do with less capital. So we're sort of balancing our operating budget on our capital support. You know, one of the things that we were able to do with COVID funding and with your municipalities is have the municipalities purchase directly equipment. So you actually own much of the equipment that's in the room, and we work with you with a memorandum of understanding to run that equipment, to upkeep that equipment. I think we just made a new purchase. Very bright. Very bright and beautiful. And I think we do it in a pretty reasonable, cost-effective way, maybe too cost-effective. But, so, yes, and we, this year, the Secretary of State has a one-point-eight million-dollar request to, as part of their budget. And we are going to be working, it actually may be a little more than that, I may be misspeaking, we're going to be working in collaboration with community radio this year. So we're sort of beginning to find ways to merge and work with other entities around the state. Thank you. Yep.
Any other questions?
No, nothing.
All right. Thanks, Megan.
I know you don't have any more questions, but, you know, remember, you always reach out to us if there's something more or different or.
Since you're here, we'll take a minute, because we did spend a year down at the police station where Logan had to put it all out and pack it all up, and put it all out and pack it all out. So really, we'll take a minute to acknowledge his efforts and the fine job that he has done and is doing. And maybe someday, Logan, near down the future, there'll be another Tim sitting here, and you can say, I sat there with a Tim once.
Yeah, you can.
Yeah, thank you, Logan. Thank you, Megan.
Have a good night.
Night, Megan. All right. Five D, Human Resource Department head, brief to the council. Colleen, you're up.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for having me. So the past six months, I feel, has been productive. We updated the general regs and personnel policy that hadn't been updated since we became a city, so that's great news. The administrative hiring procedure has been updated, and the last time that was looked at was in twenty-fourteen. We also did the employee evaluations were standardized, and managers received training on that from VLCT. So that, that was done. What we're preparing for in the future, the near future, is negotiations, which seems like that went really quickly. Yeah. And so we're also going to update the mission, vision, and values with support from Tabitha Moore and Intentional Evolution. So that's something I'm looking forward to. We are in the process of finalizing some recommendations. There was a committee formed, and we're trying to provide recommendations to the city manager about hiring and wage compression. And we are going to, in late winter, early spring, we're going to launch our employee satisfaction survey, and it's going to begin to create, oh my gosh, what am I, the word I'm looking for? We'll have data year over year to see how things have evolved.
Longitudinal?
Yes. Thank you.
Any questions? Amber?
Nope, go ahead, Elaine.
Okay. I'm just curious about the Hiring and Wage Compression Committee. What folks comprised it, and you don't have to say people, you could say positions, and then was there a consultant involved? How did that work?
Yeah. So that came out of the negotiation process, and there is six people. Two people are part of the association, two people are part of the administrative team, and then two people are not in the association. So trying to gather perspective from a lot of different viewpoints.
Okay.
Do you want more, like?
So there wasn't like a study done or consultants brought in to actually look at the compression that we're dealing with?
No. Two individuals did, on the committee, did some assessment work and kind of came to similar conclusions, which is good.
Okay. Thanks.
I'm just, I'm just going to ask you how life back at Two Lincoln is. I mean, I know that while you were in the senior center, you were sharing an office, and that wasn't ideal. But I'm wondering how relations have improved and business's function has become more cohesive as, as you've settled into the new office space and are in the office more?
Yeah. I think it's, I think it is a process of like trying to figure out what the new normal is. I think it's nice that people are able to connect in different ways, just like at the copier or, you know, in the, we have actually a break room. And so running the people in there is, it's been, I think, healthy. Communication has evolved. And I think people are just trying to re, get to know each other in a different way than they ever had. I think, and I don't know this to be true, but other, maybe Regina can say this, but the downstairs is like more populated. So I think there's like more action happening down there, where like sometimes Cindy's the only one upstairs on the, you know, second floor. And at different times, because our hours are staggered. So, but it's pretty peaceful and quiet up there, which is really, really nice.
Good. Thanks. I appreciate it.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't have any questions. Good to see you.
Thank you for having me.
Good to see you.
See you soon.
All right. Five E, Discussion and Consideration of Pearl Street Multimodal Project Alternative Including Delay Analysis Presentation. Wow, that's a mouthful. Okay. Me to share something? Are you sharing?
I'm ready to share my screen if that works well.
Awesome.
Chris, I'm sorry to see you need to wear a mask.
Just being safe.
Hope you're feeling better. Okay. Do you want me to introduce?
Yeah, I guess I can introduce this. So we have here today Stan Tech, who's been, that's a consulting firm that's been working on the Pearl Street multimodal improvements project. This is a scoping study update to create a design alternative that can be funded within the available capital budget of one-point-two-three million dollars. This project has gone through some public engagements over the past few months. There was, there was a public meeting dedicated to this that was hosted by the Planning Commission. And there's a public engagement summary that has been sent out to city councillors, as well as a question and answer that summarizes a bunch of questions that we've received, Regina and I received over the past few days when we've met with city councillors individually. But the ask today, if the city council is ready after, after everything here, is to endorse a preferred alternative, so that the, the study can be finalized and the reports can be submitted. That's the intro I have. Anything else, Regina?
I think that's it. So this is Sean Neely from Stan Tech, if you want to take it away and walk us through this. And then, Amber, up to you, if you want to just have the presentation, or if you want to ask questions along, along the way.
I think it probably makes sense to ask questions along the way if Sean's okay with that.
Sure.
Awesome.
All right. Thank you, Regina. Thank you, council. Thank you, Chris. And also thank you, Christine Ford, with us tonight from Chittenden County Regional Planning Commission, who's been a partner in this project, providing funding and, and support.
Can I interrupt for a second, Sean? I'm sorry, because I should have said that. So scoping studies typically in the county are funded by Chittenden County Regional Planning Commission and matched twenty percent by the communities. This is actually considered a regional project, so CCRBC has funded this in full. So, thank you.
Thank you. So here on the title slide, we do see the study area highlighted along Pearl Street from Susie Wilson Road to West Street Extension. Tonight, give a brief background of a previous twenty-eighteen scoping study for the same study area. We'll describe what we refer to as the purpose and need and its role in the project. We will review alternatives from the previous twenty-eighteen study and the, and a new twenty-twenty-five alternative, as well as cost estimates for all of them. And we'll open it up for additional questions and comments, but as mentioned, feel free to, to jump in along the way. And then we'll talk about next steps after, after tonight. So here's a base map of the project area. I'm sure folks are quite familiar with it. It has a, two lanes of traffic in each direction of travel, separated by a sixteen-foot-wide raised median with some trees along it. The speed limit in the study area is forty-five miles per hour, consistent with the speed limit to the west of Susie Wilson Road. And to the east of West Street Extension, it steps down to thirty-five miles per hour briefly before getting down to thirty miles per hour. There is an existing five-foot-wide concrete sidewalk along the north side of the roadway, as well as driveways for several residential, residences along the north side. There are also some transit stops for westbound transit riders in the study area. There are no transit stops for eastbound transit riders until east of West Street Extension. The closest one to the west of the study area is at Ethan Allen. And, and right now, there are no dedicated bicycle facilities within the study area, whereas to the west, there is a shared-use path running from St. Michael's College. And to the east, there are on-road bike lanes in both directions along Pearl Street. Right now, because of the raised median, motorists are prevented from making left turns into and out of driveways for the residential drives along the north side. And so they must make U-turns using either the Susie Wilson Road intersection or the West Street Extension intersection. Here we have what we refer to as the purpose and need statement. This is an important component of any scoping study that helps to identify what it is we're trying to accomplish and why. It is used to help develop alternatives, as well as to evaluate those alternatives in terms of how well they meet this. So with that, the purpose of this project is to provide safe, visible, comfortable, and convenient multimodal accommodations, including improved transit facilities that connect existing and/or planned facilities on Pearl Street, Route Fifteen, between Susie Wilson Road and West Street Extension for use by all ages, abilities, and trip purposes, while maintaining safe and efficient vehicular and pedestrian conditions along Route Fifteen. There is a need to provide an inviting travel corridor for a growing number of residents and public transit users that reinforces the city and region's goals for multimodal mobility. There's a need to complete a missing bicycle link, bicycle facility link in the city, town, excuse me, and regional bicycle network. And there is a need to identify short and medium-term improvements that can be accomplished within the existing resources secured by the City of Essex Junction. So this current study is a supplemental scoping study. In twenty-eighteen, there was a, a study performed, and I'll review two alternatives from that study. This is the first alternative. It was not selected as the preferred alternative. It maintained most of the median, except for several hundred feet near the Susie Wilson Road intersection in order to accommodate on-road bike lanes. The alternative reduced each travelway to a single traveling in each direction, except for approaches to and receiving lanes at, at the intersections. And it converted the eight-foot, excuse me, it converted the existing sidewalk to And it converted the eight foot, it converted the existing sidewalk to an eight foot shared use path. It, as mentioned, it did retain the existing median. And over at West Street Extension, it changed the configuration along the westbound approach from the existing 200 feet of two lanes of approach to a single travel lane, which is consistent with the roadway east of West Street Extension. The 2018 Alternative Three was the preferred alternative as part of that study. It also reduced travel lanes to a single lane of travel in each direction. Except that, and it also provided on-road buffered bike lanes in each direction. However, it also removed the center median and replaced that median with a turn lane so that motorists can make left turns into and out of the drives for residences along the north side of the roadway. With that, it removed the existing slip ramp and U-turn configuration at Susie Wilson Road. And it provided a bicycle crossing at Susie Wilson Road in order to access the eastbound bike lanes, including some phasing and timing adjustments at the signal. It also provided a eight foot wide shared use path, replacing the existing sidewalk. And it pushed the curb line in, into the roadway to manage the, the overall roadway width. Here we can see the U-turn portion of the West Street Extension intersection would have been removed due to removing the, the raised median. This alternative came to a cost of 2.6 million, I believe, in 2018 and converted to 20, $25. That comes out to a total project cost of over $4 million. While this alternative remains a viable long-term option, the, the city was interested in taking another look and refining an alternative that could meet the goals of the project while also fitting in with, within the available capital programming funds. So that moves us on to the 2025 refined alternative two that was prepared as part of the supplemental study. It maintains existing curbs. It provides a 10-foot separated shared use path in place of the existing sidewalk. And it also provides an eastbound transit stop. The existing two lane westbound roadway is reduced to a single lane with a buffered bike lane. And the shared use path would be separated from the roadway with a five-foot grass buffer. The existing eastbound roadway is primarily maintained as is except for narrowing to a single lane approximately midway through the study area to accommodate a public transit stop with a mid-block pedestrian crossing. Here we have some typical sections of this proposed alternative. We are looking eastbound and at the, the top of the screen is a section located about midway through where there is a, an eastbound transit shelter, transit stop provided by pushing that curb in towards the median and reducing that travelway to a single 12-foot travel lane with a three-foot shoulder. For the westbound travel lane, which is facing us in this perspective, that is converted to a single travel lane of 12 feet with a two-foot shoulder from the median as well as an on-road six-foot wide bike lane and four-foot buffer. And also the existing sidewalk would be converted to a 10-foot wide shared use path to be used by cyclists as well as pedestrians. Excuse me, including folks with carriages and mobility devices and a range of abilities. This, the bottom portion of the page shows a typical section to the east beyond the transit stop where the eastbound roadway transitions back to its existing current configuration with a single through lane and a right turn lane in advance of West Street Extension. So here we look at this alternative from a plan view. And we can see that the westbound travel, travelway has been reduced to a single travel lane with an on-road buffered bike lane. And the eastbound travelway is reduced to a single lane in the area of the transit stop platform approximately midway through the study area. There are several hundred feet of approach lanes to approach lanes for the westbound approach of Susie Wilson Road in order to accommodate the capacity of that intersection. There are also two receiving lanes coming from Susie Wilson Road serving multiple purposes, including in anticipation of a future second southbound left turn lane that V-Trans is planning to install. It also provides enough stacking room, storage space in the event of a bus stopped at the transit platform in order to provide enough capacity for vehicles behind it. Looking at the transit stop, there is a mid-block crossing paired with it. And because there is only a single lane of travel in each direction, a pedestrian is only crossing one lane of travel at a time, which increases the safety of the pedestrian. The median serves as a pedestrian refuge island, forcing the pedestrian to turn to their right before they cross the second leg, which puts their vision looking at oncoming traffic, increasing safety. This mid-block crossing would be paired with rectangular rapid flashing beacons, RRFBs, which pedestrians can push the button and the amber flashing lights indicate to motorists that there is a pedestrian in the, in the crosswalk. There's also the 10-foot wide two-way shared use path replacing the concrete sidewalk on the north side of the roadway. We can see areas of green paint at the busier driveways which indicate to motorists that they can expect cyclists crossing through here and indicates to cyclists that they can expect motorists crossing those locations. While the existing posted speed limit is 45 miles per hour in the study area, this alternative proposes to reduce that posted speed limit. For the eastbound direction, it proposes to step down at Susie Wilson Road from 45 miles per hour to 35 miles per hour with signage in advance of Susie Wilson Road indicating to motorists that the posted speed limit is, is going to be reduced. A few hundred feet past that where there's a merge condition in advance of the single lane for the transit stop, there's another step down in posted speed limit to 30 miles per hour. For the westbound direction, the speed limit would be reduced to 30 miles per hour throughout this study area, which is consistent with the westbound speed limit east of West Street Extension. Looking at the intersection of West Street Extension, we can see that this alternative proposes a single travel lane on that westbound approach, which is consistent with the single lane of travel east of this location along the Pearl Street corridor. Whereas currently there are two westbound travel lanes for a couple hundred feet. Here we compare project costs for both Alternatives Two and Three from 2018 as well as an, an option add-on that was part of that study, which included providing an on-road bike lane from Ethan Allen Avenue to Susie Wilson Road in order to provide an easier transition for cyclists to get onto the eastbound on-road bike lanes. We also show what's referred to as the no-action alternative for the purpose of, of comparison throughout the analysis. So we look at construction costs, right-of-way costs, the cost of design engineering and construction engineering support. And so the 2025 Alternative Two revised recommend, recommendation is the only one that fits within the existing 1.2 million dollar allocated capital programming for this project. Considering the cost of the median removal, that was the primary factor in driving up the cost of the preferred alternative under the 2018 study. If the median were to be removed and replaced with asphalt roadway in 2025, that would come out for a total project cost of about 1.8 million dollars. Currently below the median, there are no subbase materials that are needed below the pavement. And so this would be full-depth construction and essentially a designing and constructing a, a brand-new roadway for, for the length of the project area. Here we have a lot of, a lot of numbers and I'll, I'll talk through the highlights. This is covering the traffic operations analysis as part of this study. So here we're looking at conditions from 2017 as well as existing conditions in 2025. And then looking out at future conditions in 2045 with both a no-action alternative and the proposed alternative. So we can see that since 2017, at Susie Wilson Road, conditions have are, are pretty similar with perhaps a few seconds more or less of delay. At West Street Extension, also, you know, similar with some additional seconds of delay, you know, related to background growth of traffic volumes. When we move forward to 2045, we see that the no-action condition at Susie Wilson Road actually shows an improvement over 2025. Excuse me. And the reason for that is because of the proposed southbound left turn lane, second southbound left turn lane that V-Trans is planning to install there. Whereas looking at West Street Extension, it's fairly similar today. You know, with a, a little bit of increase in delay, you know, related to that background growth in volumes. When we look at the 2045 no-action condition compared with the 2045 proposed alternative that, that we've been reviewing tonight, the results are essentially the same at Susie Wilson Road. And the reason for that is because of the maintaining of the dual approach lanes for several hundred feet on the westbound approach to Susie Wilson Road. And that provides enough capacity to maintain operations at that intersection. At West Street Extension, we can see that there would be a couple of extra seconds of delay and that would, and that is related to removing the, or reducing the two-lane approach on the westbound, westbound approach to West Street Extension to a single lane approach. So here are some slides that kind of illustrate why we're not expecting significant traffic congestion with the lane reduction. Chris was helpful in, in, in bringing these together. So at any one time, one lane of traffic is feeding into this section of Pearl Street. So here we're looking at traffic coming from the Five Corners area westbound towards West Street Extension where there is a single lane of traffic as well as traffic coming from West Street Extension, which is also a single lane of traffic. At Susie Wilson Road, there's currently a single eastbound through lane and a single southbound left turn lane. In the westbound direction, Pearl Street does widen to two lanes just before West Street Extension. And in the eastbound direction, Pearl Street widens to two lanes to through lanes just after Susie Wilson Road. However, in approximately 800 feet, through traffic has to merge into the left lane anyway because the right lane becomes a turn lane. And so essentially, you know, it's not a typical lane reduction. Kind of jumping ahead for just a minute, it's not a typical lane reduction in that we're basically maintaining the westbound condition coming from Pearl Street and, and maintaining, you know, the conditions coming from Susie Wilson Road. And, and what, excuse me, Route 15. So getting back on track, I won't speak through all of this, but we did go through an evaluation of the V-Trans criteria for installing mid-block crossing. We looked at speed limit, number of expected pedestrians, the number of average daily traffic volumes, as well as, you know, would there be sufficient space for the facilities? Is there adequate site distance? And it meets all of the, the, the criteria. And we do, you know, propose including the rapid rectangular flashing beacons, as mentioned. And the median will serve as a pedestrian refuge island. During design, you know, it might be determined that advanced yield lines and signs indicating where drivers can yield for pedestrians could be placed as supplementals. Here we looked at the stopping site distance for when a bus is stopped at the platform to ensure that there is enough space for a driver coming from the Susie Wilson Road intersection to see and slow down with, with adequate time and space. And there is much more space available than, than is required for stopping site distance. Here we compare alternatives, not only with project costs, but also how well they meet the purpose and need, whether or not they address the U-turn condition at Susie Wilson Road, transit access, safety and, and whether or not they can be constructed within the available budget. So all three alternatives provide a missing bicycle link. They all provide an inviting corridor for bicycle and pedestrian mobility and facilities for use by all ages and experience levels. Only the preferred alternative from 2018, Alternative Three, Only the preferred alternative from 2018, Alternative Three, addresses the Susie Wilson Road U-turn by removing the median, whereas the others do not. And only the 2025 revised alternative provides additional transit access, specifically for eastbound transit users with the added stop. They all improve safety, and only the 2025 refined alternative can be constructed within the available budget. So with that, I'd like to open it up for any questions, comments, or input before we talk about next steps.
Tim and Elaine?
Defer to Elaine, as I have a lot to say.
I just have one comment, two comments. Thank you to Regina and Chris for taking the time to walk me through this individually. I think you did that with everybody, and that was a great idea. And also, I am very happy that we have figured out a way to put a crosswalk in that section of Route 15. There have been numerous residents over the years who live in that area who have been asking for this. So I'm glad we finally figured it out. Those are my only comments, so take it away.
Do you want me to share them again? Are we at that? Are you looking for that?
Yep.
Okay, so I have a problem with any sort of reduction in westbound traffic, I think is where I'm at. And it's twofold. One, we just sat at a joint planning-commissioning, development review, city council meeting, where locomotion spoke, said on-road bike lanes become snowbanks in the winter. You don't have to see that any further than going up to the top of Route 15, where the CIRC connects to see the plow job that has been done there, and realize that those bike lanes are impassable. And they said that the gold standard is sidewalk height, shared-use path. And I can 100% get on board with a sidewalk height, shared-use path. And I think it would be foolish to not try and connect to that shared-use path that is just on the other side of the Susie Wilson Road. Additionally, I can certainly get on board with an eastbound transit stop. But I don't necessarily agree with the, I would love to see a Hawk cross system, like is in front of Fannie Allen, that actually holds the traffic. The other piece that I look at a lens is emergency services. And any of those apartment buildings that are on that 200 block of Pearl Street require an entire traffic lane to be blocked. And if there's ever an emergency that requires hydrant use on that roadway, that roadway is essentially shut down, if not. But in the meantime, if it's just a standard everyday call, it is automatically reduced to one lane. So if there's a on-street bike lane, and then a separation, and then a travel lane, that is a huge offset. And so, my preferred alternative, speaking as an individual, would be to go ahead and include the bus stop. I think that's a great idea, right? With a Hawk traffic crossing that has some sort of impediment so that if there are pedestrians in the island and an errant car comes through, that they are not subject to that errant car while they wait to cross. And then, the shared-use path on the other side. I did have the pleasure of being out in that median as they paved the westbound lanes in the morning to watch the traffic. And although I'm told there was some impetus to the jug-handle turn on Susie Wilson, I'm out there quite regularly to see traffic black, to back up to about where the queuing area would be on a regular basis in that area. And so, I think there are some good pieces to this. I don't think that this alternative is the end-all-be-all the way it's presented to us. And those are my cents. So I think that's what I covered with you, right? Like, that's, that seems to be, right? 100% on board with a shared-use path and an eastbound bus stop. And whether or not there's some sort of future turn lane that's put in there down the line, is yet to be seen, but I think that's, that's my two cents.
Regina, do you want to comment on that?
Yeah, so, so totally appreciate that and the confusingness of why have two bike lanes right, right next to each other? Like, that's an excellent question. And I think the, it isn't necessarily just to provide two bike options. It's really to try to make that mid-block pedestrian crossing safer by having the pedestrian only cross one lane of traffic on the westbound side, rather than two lanes of traffic. And it also is intended to just be a traffic calming, slowing traffic down. If we maintain those two lanes of traffic, it'll be as fast as it is today, even if we lower those speeds.
And I think that's an important point, right? Like, we did have Officer Corporal Gragg sit in front of us and say that V-Trans doesn't recommend just arbitrarily setting speed limits, and that the road kind of dictates those speed limits.
Yeah, so I think it would, if we were to do that, it probably wouldn't support lowering it down to 30. But, you know, and I think Chris at some point earlier on said, you know, ideally, that space is used for better stormwater management or something. You know, it's maybe suiting a different purpose than just a second bike lane, just because we do, we are putting, you know, bike infrastructure right there. And the challenge with that is it's more expensive. And I think, to your point, Tim, when a fire truck does need to be sitting there.
Yeah, and it's also a major thoroughfare for all sorts of other emergency services, right? It's a main thoroughfare for Essex rescue to get out of town, for city services to go into the town, and all sorts of other aspects of that as well.
Could you finish that thought, what you were saying?
I'm sorry.
Just that if we actually built it with something like stormwater practices or curbing of some kind, then a fire truck can't actually take up that lane. This is just actually a painted.
Just a paint job.
Which means the fire truck can still take that space when they need to take that space. So I completely get both sides. I think it's a trade-off of what we're attempting to achieve here between those two things. I am not the expert, and we would need to kind of hand this over to the engineers, but I think it's not to say that we couldn't keep it as two westbound lanes out of the city. But those are the trade-offs and what we would be kind of losing if that's what we did. But it is possible.
Would you like any input or comments? So, yeah, thank you again for those comments. So, a couple points in regards to, you know, snow storage with the bike lanes. It does, you know, assume that the city takes on snow removal and, you know, and includes that as part of their winter operations with five feet of grass buffer. That's generally considered reasonable snow storage space, as, you know, as it is today. I mean, the roadway curb-to-curb would be the same as it is today. And so the snow plowing operations are essentially the same. In terms of a Hawk, I would recommend against that, as I believe V-Trans would as well. There is an existing Hawk, as I'm sure you're aware, west of this area on Vermont Route 15 in front of Fannie Allen. That Hawk actually contributes to confusion among the driving public and has contributed to several crashes. And V-Trans has future plans to remove that Hawk and replace it with a conventional traffic signal system. And, you know, using the criteria not only for V-Trans mid-block crossings, but also other sources like Federal Highway Administration. For the context of this mid-block crossing, rectangular rapid flashing beacons are considered sufficient. They're also much more cost-effective. Placing a Hawk signal there would essentially be the cost of a new signal. These days, signals are going up pretty high in cost, so you could add another half a million dollars to the project cost in order to install that. In terms of emergency access, you know, Regina makes a great point about, you know, having that space of the buffered bike lane for emergency access. In terms of the neck-down to a single lane at the bus stop, you know, that's only for a brief length. And so, you know, vehicles can clear out of the way pretty quickly. And, you know, there's also, you know, the curb of the median that can be used to mount, you know, for an emergency vehicle, you know, if need be, to get through that single bottleneck there. And I'm trying to think of other comments that you mentioned that maybe I haven't addressed. Could you remind me if there were others?
Yeah, I think it's the, for me, it's really the volume of westbound traffic.
Sure, yeah, so that's a great comment. And so, you know, we did evaluate the capacity of the roadway, as well as the intersections we conferred with V-Trans, and we made sure that the length of the two travel lanes on the westbound approach to Susie Wilson Road are long enough to sufficiently store the queues to not negatively impact traffic operations along that intersection. And, you know, from the roadway perspective, it's really maintaining the single-lane configuration that is east of West Street Extension on Pearl Street today.
Sean, go ahead, Amber. No, I was just saying thank you, so go ahead, Regina.
We have some traffic here, especially on days when the fairgrounds are used for some pretty big events, and that's a lot of people leaving. So could you explain how that would, how that would work in those circumstances, and if we should be concerned about not being able to clear that traffic?
Sure, so that's a great question. So, a few items, and, you know, in terms of traffic going to the Expo, you know, today, as they're traveling along this corridor and they're, you know, intending for the Expo as their destination, they're already merging to a single lane of traffic to get into that single-through lane. And the bottleneck, you know, is really occurring more towards the entrance of the Expo. In terms of the westbound travel lanes, you know, for exiting traffic, in a temporary situation, you could modify that, and you could put out cones and signage if you really wanted to open that up to two lanes for a temporary event. Another consideration is that roadway facilities are not designed for the worst-case scenarios. That would be, that would not be cost-effective. So we generally aim to design for the 30th busiest hour of the year. And so, if there are, you know, existing backups, you know, around events at the fair, at Expo, then there would likely still be backups with, you know, with any proposed change here.
And so, that ties back into the conversation that we're going to be having somewhere along the line with building height, whenever that comes to us, as we discuss potentially adding hundreds, if not 1,000-plus housing units. And even if, if those are two people and they have one car, that's 500 to 700 more cars in the area, and there are at least a few hundred more units that are scheduled for that corridor. And so I don't understand how we say, here's the housing, the volume of cars is going to increase, and we're reducing your travel.
So a comment I might share in regards to that is by making this corridor more of a multimodal corridor, connecting the missing bicycle link, providing better facilities for active transportation, as well as for transit users, you're providing people with more options.
And I'm not arguing that point at all with you. I don't disagree with that. What I'm saying is Americans love their cars, right? Like, we can't argue with that. There's four in my driveway at the moment. You know, it's, there's, there's, I'm not arguing that there is a need for some sort of safer pedestrian bicycle travel in this area, but what I'm saying is we cannot ignore the current volume of cars, which will only increase as housing increases.
I mean, I can't disagree with you at all on that. Of course, would we have, if we add more apartment buildings and more units, we will obviously have more cars, but we will also have more pedestrians. And we will also be, like, this, I see this as a balancing act.
Well, and that's, you know, and that's why I say, like, I can 100% get on board with an eastbound bus stop. I think that's fantastic. And I can 100% get on board with a sidewalk height, shared-use path. But when we talk about reducing the westbound travel lanes, that is a major thoroughfare. It dumps to Susie Wilson Road, it dumps to College Parkway. There is a huge volume of traffic on that roadway.
I still think we're faced with a balancing act between our goal of making our community more walkable and safe for pedestrians and bicyclists and managing the increased traffic. Another thing I think we want to just remember is that in the past, we have talked many times, or maybe not at this table, but I know that CCRPC has often talked about managing traffic through the region. And, you know, our goal is to have safe traffic going all the way through Five Corners, and in both directions, in all directions. And so, while this does reduce the volume allowable on the westbound side, it also slows it through the entire community, which is what we're, what we want to keep everyone safe. So, I totally understand the objections you have. I think the model being presented to us is a sufficient compromise on both the need for pedestrian safety and the ability to move traffic smoothly through the community.
Can I just bring it back for two seconds? And good discussion, but if there, do you guys have any more questions? Otherwise, I'm going to open it up for public comment and then bring it back to us for discussion.
I have a question for Sean.
Okay.
Does the second, does the existing second westbound lane actually provide much additional capacity to this road? Or is it really just feeding, is it just a high-capacity configuration feeding into a limited-capacity intersection? Because like, Suzie Wilson Road is often a red light for you when you're, you know, when you're approaching from that way. And that's why you get a queue that far behind.
Right, so what's critical is to have a sufficient length of, you know, dual approach lanes in advance of the intersection. But in terms of the capacity of the roadway, you know, throughout the study area, having two westbound lanes is not required for the capacity that, you know, for the numbers that we're seeing. One other point that I would make is that the changes that are proposed for the westbound roadway are paint. And so, if this were implemented, and in some amount of time, the results were unsatisfactory, it could easily be transferred back to two travel lanes.
So to that point, we could set up cones and test it before we painted it?
That would be an option.
You guys okay with me going to the public or Regina?
More a question.
Yeah.
Sean, can you explain, on the slide with the, that explains the level of service and the delay and the volume to capacity ratio?
What is considered, so you are comparing today versus 2045 to. Tim's question about the fact that we're going to see a lot more housing, hopefully, right, if we are successful. In our bigger efforts, we are going to see more housing, so is 2045, what is that assuming in terms of future? Homes and jobs in the region?
Sure, so that's a good question. The 2024, I mean, 2045 volumes are based on growth factors recommended by V Trans for. For increasing forecasting volume growth in the future. However, you know, that that does incorporate general increases in development. It, we did not include. A specific number of additional cars for new properties along, you know, Pearl Street, for example. But we, you know, we we use the. The guidelines from V Trans for, you know, forecasting volume, you know, growth of of traffic volumes into the future. And looking back over, you know, recent years, they they have, you know, fluctuated, I mean, after the pandemic, of course, there was disruption. And, you know, and they didn't, they didn't totally bounce back right away, but but those are where the numbers come from for this.
Yeah, okay, thank you, and I think it's really. No one has the crystal ball to see how effectively everybody will achieve even the mid target, right, versus the high target, I mean, these are hope, 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 hope and dreams, we can get there. So, but that is helpful, thank you, so this really is looking at. A growth rate that is what is less than our hopes and dreams.
I will also mention that V Trans policy for urban intersections is that. They consider what we refer to as level of service, which are represented by the letters, which is a combination of factors, notably the amount of delay. They find that a level of service of D is acceptable in in urban areas and so there's, you know. Right now, you know, we're showing level of service C or better. As a consideration.
All right, I'm going to open up the public comment and then I'll bring it back to the council, I'm going to start online, Teresa.
Thank you, Amber. I definitely hear that our goal is to become much more of a walking and biking community. And I think that's, excuse me, a great goal, however, we have to look at reality. As we have more housing built and we have more families in housing, they're going to have cars, there are going to be more cars in Essex Junction. You cannot successfully bike or walk to our supermarkets and do a real shopping, yeah. I walk up to Hannaford's all the time if I only need one or two things or I only need to go to the pharmacy. But, you know, all it takes is a weather event like we've had the past couple of days and you can't walk because it's all ice. Then you think of. Champlain Valley Expo and how all of their events and what that does to traffic as it is. Coming from two lanes as we come up to Susie Wilson and then it goes to one lane as we're heading east. So often there are cars that are in the left hand lane where you need to go straight, which is what we're doing. And they move into the right hand lane and they do that quick zoom around onto West Street and then cut back on to Pearl Street, cutting everybody off. How there haven't been numerous accidents there is remarkable. If I thought there was any hope, and and I certainly would love this, if I thought there was any hope that we were going to get true mass transit here. That we were going to have bus lines that actually meant something and we could count on them and count on them increasing, especially as our housing increases. I would be all for this, but since we kind of know that isn't going to happen. Yes, biking and walking is great and wonderful, it doesn't mean that it's practical in this area. At a cost of what's going to happen to all the car traffic, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else online? Not seeing any hands, anybody in the room?
You want to come up to the other, you can come up to the other microphone here?
Yeah. Is this thing on?
If it's not, it will be in.
Right, so. I've looked over these plans actually at the Meet Me on Main and I hadn't noticed that the bike lane. For westbound is intended to be just paint. I don't know if there have been studies done about paint markings. But I will tell you that in, you know, 40 years of driving in Vermont, when it's winter, I can't see any paint. If there's rain or snow, you can't tell what the road markings are. Especially if you change a longstanding traffic pattern, there will be a period where. In the absence of real data, I can guarantee that it's going to be less safe. Also. Since snow plows presumably would be. Plowing over the painted area, that paint is going to degrade and it's going to need to be maintained far more often than something like a crosswalk. Or it seems to me that it would be. So, yeah, yes, I'm, I'm all for having more options, my wife and I like to bike around and walk around when we can. But. It's. I I would be very concerned about having only paint between me and some person who thinks they know what the lanes are in the winter or in a rainstorm. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Anybody else in the room?
Can I comment on that?
Yeah, I'm just, let me, is there nobody else, Tim?
No, there's no one else in the room, I'm sorry.
Okay, go ahead, Sean.
Sure. You brought up some great points. And right now, the the proposed alternative is, you know, just showing paint. However, you know, there is the option to add raised raised bollards. That, you know, are are used in in other areas in Chinn County and Burlington. To, you know, to maintain, you know, to provide vertical separation in addition to the the horizontal separation, you know, with the the buffered bike lane. So that that is an option. It, you know, it's, they're, they're not a huge cost, but, you know. Another consideration for that is, you know, snow plowing, you know, if that were, they were maintained during the winter, then a sidewalk plow would be helpful to. Plow the the bike lanes. And then, you know, in addition, signage, you know, indicating to motorists what the the lane configuration is. And, you know, and getting that in place well before the the winter season, there there are, you know. There is a transition time after, you know, major reconfigurations of transportation facilities. But there can be communication in different forms like changeable portable message boards. Public messaging or, I don't know, public campaign. And so, you know, just some other considerations and, you know, looking at some other locations where similar treatments have have been made. You know, they they seem to operate sufficiently.
You. Are there any other questions, council?
I'll bring it, can I bring it back around, I told you I had a lot to say on this one. And so I I understand that there's been potentially some preliminary discussion with the developer in the area about. Potentially including a left hand turn lane. That may or may not happen at some point, and so I'm curious because the the hawk idea sounded like a bad idea, but if. Part of the contingency on that left hand turn lane was a traffic signal to stop westbound traffic so that vehicle can turn or a pedestrian could turn. Then then that, like, I want to get on board with this, but I'm just not, I'm I'm not, this is, this is not an alternative that I think that, that's where I'm at. I think there's still too many, like, I I love, I love pieces of it, I really do, but. I guess I'll leave it there.
Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, but.
No, you're good. It happened anyway.
Clarify the point if I could, or the question if I could?
Yeah, that's fine, go ahead.
Is your question, Tim, what if we turned that, it's not a rapid flashing beacon, it's basically an actual traffic light?
Right, well, if you're, if we were, we're, we're all kind of in agreement that the eastbound bus stop is a good idea, right?
Yeah.
And so if we rapid flash beacon that one lane and then that bus stop is opposite a potential new left turn lane. And part of the condition for that is a traffic light because you're not going to turn through there, that, you know, what that, what that looks like. And so that would hold traffic for the pedestrians out of the median and still allows westbound traffic, like I said, I mean, there's parts of this I absolutely love. Sidewalk height multi-use path, absolutely, sign me up tomorrow, eastbound bus stop, sign me up tomorrow. But that's pretty much where I stop at.
Regina, I'm trying to, I guess I'm trying to get to the point of. What you guys need from us tonight and if there's any way I think you need us, our approval on this. And is there any approval that we can make with some contingencies to to make? Counselor Miller feel feel a little bit more on on board with this project? Yeah?
Yes, I would say. We do need a decision eventually, I think a condition with conditions, what did I just say? I think a decision with conditions is something we could at least take away and find out if we could make that work. The, yeah, and I'll just add that at the, in the grand, grand scheme of things, it is not imperative. That a decision is made tonight and I'm just saying that acknowledging that you guys are down to your, to your people, so.
Thank you. I'm going to throw it back to the council, I mean, what is your, Elaine, what's your thoughts? Would you, would you guys want to move forward with approving this tonight with some conditions, do you want to table the rest of this conversation until we have the rest of our? Our crew?
My assumption is that Regina and Chris have talked to Marcus and Brian also, right? Okay, so you do have their thoughts.
What we've, we have been very clear in the one-on-one conversations that the point of those are to make sure we have your questions and concerns clear to us so that we can make sure we can get you answers.
Okay.
I am certainly not prepared to tell you what I think Brian and Marcus are thinking.
That's fine, that's fine, I I am. I want to move this forward insofar as the staff is able to continue work on it in a productive way. And if we can address Tim's concerns in addition to that and maybe, you know. You can begin the process, whatever the next steps are, but we also have time to address that one portion. I think that would be an ideal situation.
So what I'd be looking for is, I mean, there's a, there is a recommendation that we approve the 2025 alternative to as the preferred alternative. For the near term, the Pearl Street multimodal improvement scoping study, I think that we have to say. With the condition that, and what I'm looking for is what is that with that, with the condition that, that goes with the rest of that motion? That that the staff investigate.
That what we decide does not mean that if we can't come up with a suitable alternative for that one portion, that the whole thing isn't scrapped. Like, I don't want it to stop because we can't agree on this one piece of it.
Does it make sense to wait until everyone is tabled? Like Marcus and Brian, they're here to be part of the discussion and then I'm potentially outvoted? Like, you know?
I mean, I'm happy to keep the direction, I I mean, I think the other thing is, 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 I mean, I don't want to have to go through this presentation again to be clear, so.
Yeah, right, we can put the onus on them.
Second time we've had this presentation in some iteration, so. I mean, I'm happy to table this if if cities, if if staff is okay with tabling it until with just a decision at the next meeting. I I can get on board with that if if that's the thought, I just, again, to Elaine's point, I don't want to. I don't want to hinder the ability of staff to keep moving forward with this because we we lose valuable time and and whatnot on construction season, et cetera, doing RFPs, all that jazz. So if I'm, if if I'm leaning on you Regina to tell us if we table this, that it's not going to cause serious issues.
I think it's fine, but I'm going to give Chris an opportunity to disagree.
Well, it 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 depends if we're serious about attempting to, you know, move this forward expeditiously. You know, if if that's, if that's a decision, because. Yeah, there is potentially an opportunity to to go for final, complete final design, surveying. In the winter and to go out to bid for the 2026 construction season, that's, that's the nature of municipal projects, it it can just move a lot quicker than, you know, federally funded project. But it is getting pretty tight. If it, if it slips another year, that's, I mean, that's fine, it's been, it's been the way, it's been the way it is for for many years, but. Construction costs do tend to go.
Would you? Like a motion to approve the alternative as long as it, westbound traffic isn't impeded, I mean, I don't.
That seems a little. Vague, exactly, it's a little vague.
Are, I'm assuming that when both Brian and Marcus said that they could not be at this meeting, they were aware that. Action would occur in which they were not participating and that they couldn't avoid that because they were. Dealing with things that prevented them from attending today, while I am very interested in always being as inclusive as possible with all of our members. I don't want to see this go another year, like, if it literally means that we don't. Move forward here now, that we have to wait another year to get back into the the RFP window and then the deal with increased. Construction costs, I would rather vote today.
So I'm going to bring it back to, it's a motion to approve, but with the conditions, and I think they can be that the staff investigate. And then what the rest of the, I'm leaning on you, Tim, investigate what alternatives to put into motion. Yeah, a little bit broader, not broader.
Alternatives to the westbound traffic volume. Alternatives, alternatives to the adjustments to westbound traffic volume.
If we amend it and it's adjusted and then there's no alternatives to the westbound traffic volume, then. Continues to to move through the process, right?
Yes.
So, I don't.
If that's the only piece, though, that, and that is just paint. For the most part, I mean, is it possible to? Kind of move forward and still report back and and get a a decision on the the westbound lanes before we do final design because. Having some, having some certainty now will allow the city to plan for surveying and preparing for putting out maybe an RFP for for a final design. But we don't have to kind of direct the, whatever company is going to do final design on what configuration. Westbound lanes will be until probably at least, like, January, so. Does that help? Does, does that help?
Yeah, I mean, that's probably true, because we're really talking about it's striped where two car lanes of traffic are going, or it's striped where there's one car lane of traffic going and a bike lane is happening in the other one. I mean, that's, that's really, I think, the extent of the difference that we're talking about.
So could, could we say that, that we approve, we approve this, um, with, for, to be, to, for staff to go to, to, um, continue with engineering, but with staff to return to the council prior to final design regarding the alternative of the westbound traffic? I don't know what I want to mean.
Yeah, westbound, then keep the gracious.
Yeah, does that make sense?
That makes sense.
Tim?
Okay, if it comes back.
Don't make me, don't make me, like, redo that, because I don't know what I just said.
We'll refer to the minutes for that.
I don't want to see if Sean has any thoughts on, on, like, op, like, in, in terms of design and phasing, does that?
I think that's a good idea. Yeah, I think it, um, would help to move things forward, but it also gives you the option, you know, and, and to, one, you know, provide some more information and to confirm, uh, what the preferred, uh, configuration for the westbound, um, roadway is, uh, whether it's, um, as proposed, you know, as shown here, whether it's maintaining, um, existing two lanes of traffic, um, or some alternate. Um, but there are options, and I think that, you know, considering we're talking about paint, um, I think this is a good plan to move forward with.
Good, then I'm going to make that motion that I somewhat just made. All right, all in favor? Yeah?
Aye.
Aye. Tim? Are you a no?
A no, I'm on. I'm, if it's coming back, I'm okay. I'm okay for now.
Okay, so you're a yea on that motion.
An apprehensive yea.
Okay, all right, so then it's unanimous, okay. Well, duly noted for the note, for the record. Did, Regina, are you, are you guys clear on that somewhat convoluted motion?
I am.
Okay, all right, cool. Thank you, Sean, thank you, Chris, thank you, Regina, thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Christine.
Thank you, Christine.
Thank you all.
All right, we are moving on to five F, discussion and consideration of the public works facility, next step. Little update on where we're at with our new public works building. And I saw Ricky on line.
He is on, um, essentially, um, we just wanted to kind of bring a brief update through and appreciated the last time that we talked about this. Um, that there were some questions about really what is the need and trying to better understand that. Um, so, uh, Ricky and Rick Hamlin, um, put this list together, um, to better describe that, and, um, it's just super helpful to understand some of the operations of the vehicles and why it's important for them to be, for some of them to be covered, um, and to just have a facility that can, um, better accommodate that. And I think a lot of this, the important kind of takeaway on a lot of that is, um, our vehicles are very expensive. So the more that we can actually properly maintain them and keep them stored, um, the longer life we can, uh, we can have with them. Also, since last time that we, um, talked with folks about this, um, Rick and Ricky have gone out and, uh, took a site visit at Milton Public Works Facility. Um, there are a couple of other facilities that have been done, um, recently. Also, uh, the city of Barry just passed a bond vote last week or the week before, um, for their public works facility. Um, that was, uh, merely $3 million, a very, very much lower number, but essentially what's going on there is they've got a, um, a building that they're just simply moving into, um, a building that's configured quite well for a public works facility, and they're doing some changes to it, but basically moving into an existing building. So, different than what we are talking about, for sure. Um, so, uh, this is really just for an update. Um, what you also got here in this memo is just explaining kind of the next steps, um, for you all. Uh, we are still roughly looking at about eight to nine million dollars for the concept that we are, um, that we're talking through. Um, and so we want to just make sure you've got that, just kind of in your mind as we go through budget day, which is on, um, December 5th. Um, then on January 28th, we will have a bit more of a refined conceptual design with a more refined cost estimate. Um, you know, these, this number is still, um, it's an estimate until we get way, way further down the road. We just really need to have a, um, confidence in what number we're bringing to the voters, if you folks so choose to do that. So on February 11th, uh, is when, um, we would be talking about the budget again, um, let me just clarify this. Um, and at that point, you will have to decide, um, are you moving this onto the ballot or not putting this on the ballot? Um, and then if you do, April 7th, um, this bond vote will be in front of the voters. So that's it, just wanted to kind of give that, um, update. Ricky is on, if anybody's got any questions for him. Um, but that's the update.
Tim, Elaine, questions?
I don't have any questions about the facility. Um, but I do want to just confirm that when we go through the budget process, we are also going to have rough estimates on all of the enterprise fund expected needs, so we can look at everything together, the total tax burden that we're looking at?
Yes, on budget day, same as last year, you will have both.
Okay.
Um, and, uh, the, um, enterprise budgets are as close as we can get them. Some of them are determined based on amount of flow, which is additional data that comes and it can, it can shift it, but, um, yes, you still will have all that information.
And we're not looking at bonding for anything else next year, just the public works, or do we have a stormwater thing or a wastewater thing?
Um, at this point, um, you know, we have spoken about recreation a little bit and what maybe could or should happen there. Um, we don't have anything on the table right now for that.
Okay.
Um, we are looking at moving forward those pump stations that were approved last year, and making sure that we have enough money for those.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, outside of that, no, there is nothing that I am aware of from a bond vote perspective that would come forward.
Great, okay, thank you.
I'm, I'm just curious what, what the intermediary steps are between now and then to refine the cost estimate so that we're sure that the dollar figures, there an RFP that's going out? Are you relying on Rick Hamlin? Are you talking to, like, Breadloaf that did design build here? Uh, or the company that did the, uh, they tried, they took to Milton, are they talking to that company that did design build? So that when these numbers come to us, they're actual numbers and not just best guess kind of thing?
Mm-hmm. Um, ideally, we would have a architect take a look at the numbers. Um, and so we do have to figure out how we, how we're going to make that step happen in the short amount of time, but that is our intention.
Yeah, and then, so I'll, as someone who's spent 20 years associated with the construction industry, I will tell you that design build is cheaper.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and you can do that all with one, one firm through an RFP. Uh, and just food for thought, I'm not, whatever, but if you, you, you saw it here, right? The architect designed it, and then the contractor got into it, and then they found all this other stuff, and then it had to go through this other process, and then the change orders came through, and then, so there's a more streamlined process through design build.
Yeah, and I think, um, that is a complete option for us to consider as we, if we get approval and then move forward. This is really the stepping stones of, of getting an estimate only to give us confidence for that bond vote, not in terms of, you know, we don't want to go through the expense of designing the building before we actually.
I get it, yeah, no, I, I completely understand what you're saying, and just, when that number comes for the bond vote, it'll be a hard number.
Yeah, yeah, it, it will be as best as we can get it, for sure. It will be as best as we can get it, so we don't have to circle back around again for another one, is what I'll say.
And Rick's online? Mr. Jones, are you online?
He's online. He's just quiet.
I am, yes, I'm trying to find my cursor.
Anything to say about your, uh, field trip to Milton?
Yeah, nice facility. Um, see a lot of, learned, learned a few things on that, and we did a couple of quick, uh, rough sketch with Rick Hamlin the other day to see how it's going to fit on our lot. He's going to try to sketch something out and see what we got for, for numbers, for square footage, see if we can make it, so yes, we are working on it.
Wonderful, thanks.
No, thank you.
Uh, I don't know if there's any public comment that, on this topic, so I'll open it up to that in the room?
In the room.
And online? All right, nothing online, anything else, council members? Tim?
Nope, I'm good, thank you.
All right, thanks, Ricky. Bye. All right, discussion and consideration of the rebranding identity options, and Ashley is with us, take it away.
Good evening, everyone, thanks for, uh, having me and sticking around for my, uh, presentation tonight. Uh, I do want to mention that I do have two other committee members, um, Katie and Jeff, who are online as well to help, uh, talk to you guys tonight about our process to, uh, get to where we are right now with these options that we're bringing forward towards you guys. So I'm going to share my screen, and then we'll get started with the presentation. Okay, can you guys see that?
Yes.
Perfect, okay. Um, so Place Creative, um, has been working with our rebranding committee to develop some identity options for us. Uh, they presented these identity options to the committee, um, on November 5th. And, uh, now we have had an opportunity to look over those, and we are bringing them to your, to you guys, uh, with a recommendation tonight on what we feel like we should move forward with on. Um, just to get us started, I wanted to just mention some of the goals, um, that this, uh, project kind of we were looking at through the brand, um, survey that we did with the community, and also through our discovery session that we did, uh, with Place Creative, what the committee did. Really what came out of all of that was we really were looking for an identity that reflected our progress. Um, it's a diverse and inclusive community. We wanted something that resonated as, uh, a community that has deep roots with our history, but also is forward-moving. We wanted something that was warm, energetic, thoughtful, welcoming, confident, and vibrant, and then we also wanted to get, convey connection. Connection's a word that you'll see a lot within this presentation, but it was a word that we saw a lot within the survey. It was also a word that came up a lot, if you'll remember, in our strategic planning process, and as part is our pillar six, um, is that connection word, so, um, that's really something that we wanted to convey also within our, um, identity as well. So, um, another few of important considerations. Um, one of the things that our survey respondents clearly said, they wanted a warm color palette, so you'll see a lot of warmer colors within these options. Um, the survey respondents, you know, some of the words that they used were friendly, safe, clean, connected, walkable, and welcoming, um, to describe Essex Junction, so we tried, wanted to make sure that we were, um, having those, um, thoughts and feelings in our design. And then as a committee, we wanted to avoid identities that were really formal, we didn't want anything really literal or loaded with a lot of images or anything that was trendy. And I will say, and when we were looking at, as a, we were doing our discovery section, we talked about the different logo options. And so logo options are really broken down into three options. You have your literal logo, which is what we have right now. It's, it's a depiction of a place or a thing usually. And then you have more abstract logos, which can take on a form of whatever you interpret them to be. Um, it can be, uh, different visuals or different, uh, designs, um, but it really doesn't have a specific place or thing associated with it. And then you can have a word mark, which is using type and color to really express the personality within, uh, that logo. So you'll see a couple of those kind of examples within some of the things that we're presenting today. So, as we move forward, um, this is where we are at today with our logo, our current logo. Uh, we asked Place to at least give us five identity options, they brought us seven, so we have a few more to go through tonight than we were expecting. So, let's just move right on with it. Our first concept is concept A. Within all of these, you're going to see a logo, a tagline, a color palette, and some examples of how a logo would appear on the product. Uh, two things to note, uh, we have five rounds of revisions to make of one of these concepts. So what you see tonight is not the final design moving forward. We have lots of opportunity to make changes to these logos. The second thing is our taglines that you will see associated with the logos are interchangeable, we can change those out uh, with any of the logos, uh, we don't have to stick to what is associated right now. Okay, so our first concept, design, uh, option, the concept A, uh, this one is based around the idea of connection. Uh, the logo is both literal and abstract. Um, it represents the five corners, which is offering that sense of place, that's where that literal, uh, logo option comes in. As you can see, it's the, uh, five corners nod is an abstract image. When we were going through this, somebody first thought it was a, um, stained glass window when we were talking about this. Um, it does have a nod to history, um, as the typography is a little more traditional, it's got that serif added to it. Um, but it has also that contemporary vibe with it. Um, the color palette on this is warm, um, it has, uh, some muted brighter colors, though. And then the tagline with this is where it all comes together, and here are some examples of what that would look on products. Concept B is, oop, is a word mark exploration. Um, it has these overlapping, uh, letters that speak to connection, um, it actually, it also has some fun, warm colors that have a lot of energy to it, but it's very approachable. Um, like I mentioned, it's a very warm and vibrant color palette, and the tagline for this one is connected to community. And here are a couple of options for the products. Design, concept C. This one leans more towards, um, a heritage and traditional, um, sense. Uh, they really wanted to look at some of the architecture, that was the historical architecture that was in Essex Junction, and try to build some designs around that. The shape of this mark is a centered monogram, um, and it is like a placeholder for the type of city of Essex Junction. Um, it does have more of a contemporary undercurrent, um, but it's got a very simple color palette. This is really, uh, bold colors with this one, um, but it doesn't have as many of those colors. Uh, the tagline around this is centered around you, and here are a few options with the products. Concept D, this, uh, is, design is again about connectivity. Um, this mark conveys a sense of things coming and, uh, together, and it's a unique points of connection. Um, it's very energetic, it tries to catch your eyes with the bright colors that it has and the unique design. Uh, again, the color palette is very vibrant and energetic, um, and the tagline for this one is bringing it all together. And here are a couple of examples of product placements. Oop, design E. Uh, this design is about centeredness, um, it's not, the design is not a literal five corners, um, but the mark was supposed to be more of a burst of spark and creativity, um, in the community that's the center of it all. Uh, this color palette is, uh, pretty simple in the sense that it's got, uh, that green with, um, the calm blue uh, associated with it, so it doesn't have a, a lot of, uh, variations in color, um, in it. The tagline for this one is at the center of it all, and, oop, people on the past, there's a few product placements for that one. Design F, uh, this one leans, uh, towards sense of heritage and history, um, but they're trying to do it in a little bit of a more contemporary way. Um, it's designed to feel at home, again, with the architecture that we have in the city, um, but it is also, uh, is a nod towards how we refer to the city as, uh, the junction, um, that was something that came up when we. Um, that was something that came up whenever we were looking at uh what we were actually called was we were called Essex Junction and, or the Junction or um, the city or what it, what that was gonna be. So some of the questions that we asked was how people uh defined us. So they use this to talk about the junction focal point. Um, again, this color palette is pretty simple. Um, it's got again some bolder colors. Um, and the tagline for this is small city, big heart. And here are some options on what that looks like on the products. And then last but certainly not least is Concept G. Uh, again, this one is speaking towards community centeredness and coming together. Uh, the shape of the mark almost has a quilted pattern. Uh, it has a balance of both warm and cool colors. Warm was our predominant color, um, but cool came in second um in our survey. Uh, the arrow shape is uh designs is supposed to be about connections um both to the center of the city and from the center of the city. Um, and as, as an access point to many dis- destinations uh beyond just Essex Junction. Um, the color palette for this is a mixed color palette. Um, and it is, tagline is Vermont's Neighborhood City. So here is that product placement. And then we have all the logos uh together at the end. So uh, after this meeting, uh, the committee obviously told some place some feedback from what we thought about these options immediately. And then we met together to really just sit down and try to like where we were at and what we were thinking. Um, and really, we as a committee felt that Concept A um was the uh logo that really uh represented our city the best. Um, it has a uh heritage feel to it, but also shows forward momentum. It's very distinctive to us um as it showcases the five corners. Um, and it is an abstract interpretation of that though. So it does have those little a nod to, if you know what it is, you know what it is. If you don't, uh, then it's might just be a pretty image for them. Um, we also feel like it strikes a good balance between contemporary and traditional with the font that they chose. Uh, the lowercase e, some of us liked it and we thought that it felt more approachable. Some of us didn't like it, so that's an uh something that we might consider to look at. Um, brown is the color palette uh for the text in this, uh, which brings more of a history and craftsmanship feel to it. Um, even, and then the, like I said, with a lowercase e, it does have that modern feel to it. Um, we feel like it uh like, obviously it's defining our roads, but it can also define our neighborhoods. Um, so it reinforces that sense of place and community. Um, and it feels like it's something that's modern and fresh, but also has that history uh feel to it. Uh, we feel that it's also um really reflects the feedback that we heard. We heard that connective, that warm and welcoming and vibrant. Those were words that we kept hearing throughout the survey and throughout our even interpretation when we were doing our discovery same uh uh session. And that really, we talked about neighborhoods and my neighborhood does this and my neighborhood. And so we wanted to feel a logo that had that spirit of that community and that connectiveness. Um, we personally liked the Vermont's Neighborhood City um as the tagline. We thought that tied in perfectly with what we were trying to, to convey with the logo. Um, and uh felt that it represented that feeling that we were trying to get together the best. So I'm gonna pause there. Um, and I'm gonna say if uh Jeff or Katie has anything that they would like to add on top of this to help better uh give their opinions on why also they decided to move forward with this as well. And any thoughts that they had um on this process, not to put you guys on the spot, but if you would like to, just raise your hand and we'll uh, we'll get you on as well.
Not seen any hands, Ash.
Yeah, Jeff, go ahead.
Yeah, hi, everyone. I think, Ashley, you summed it up well, and this has been a, a great project for the team. And we're really super excited about where we are and where we landed. I think, you know, when, and then when the whole team had the discussion at the end, as you had pointed out, Ashley, um, it just, this mark, you know, Option A here is very distinctive and ownable to the city of Essex Junction. You're not gonna see another town or city in the state of Vermont or, or anywhere, you know, come up with this unique design. So it's smart, it's well thought out. And, and we did listen to our community members. So I think that's what's really important was to try to get as much, you know, insight um before we proceeded with it, with this exercise. Um, as you said, I think those great little color blocks inside of that really reflect the neighborhoods. Um, it reflects our community and in the overall, it feels very smart and intentional. So um, that's, we're, we're very excited and, and that's what we recommend today. So, thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. Katie?
Hi, I don't have too much more to add on that, but I do um agree with all points that um you have made. Um, Jeff, as well as you, Ashley, thank you for presenting those um for us. And thank you all for your consideration with us and appreciate uh being able to be on the committee. So um, I think, you know, it's just a very, to me, it just felt the most considered of all of the information, as Jeff said, just to kind of echo that. Um, it just felt the most thought out and considered of all of them. Um, so I, I welcome feedback and I'm curious to know the thoughts of um those who are seeing it for the first time.
Thanks, Katie.
So yeah, but that's kind of where we're at. Um, we do have some next steps in the memo that we can happily suggest that what we were thinking of when, when we, when we say next steps is like what we would say to the um place of what we want to look at next. Obviously, if that is the direction of the city council as well. Um, but I'm happy to uh listen to you guys. And would you like me to keep the logos up or uh while we talk? Okay.
Yeah, that's good. That would be great. Uh, I'm gonna start with Tim because Tim sat on the rebranding committee uh and hear his thoughts. And then I'll come to you, Elaine. Sorry.
That I used while I was watching the presentation and I'm really glad there were seven options because I was very underwhelmed with the first four. And that, and that's kind of where I'm at as a, like a lifelong resident of Essex Junction. Uh, I appreciate the, the thought, but when I look at these, I uh, and I, and I showed them around quite a bit. And so I will say that Option A came back as Simon says, uh, no one really cared for Option B. Uh, who, Option C is the Winuski Traffic Circle, as was pointed out in the original logo. Uh, my daughter compared D to Planned Parenthood. Uh, so I thought that was pretty funny, you know? Uh, I didn't, uh, D was fine, but I think, you know, like they, if they'd incorporated that five corners into that mark. Uh, I had real problems with the lowercase E because I feel like it just leaves us under the thumb of Essex Town still. Like, we're not, uh, you know, we're not standing on our own. Uh, Junction kind of came out like, hmm, you know, to fitting for a restaurant. And the last one came out as the Winter Olympics. And so I was really, uh, like I said, underwhelmed, but I'm not gonna detract from uh the committee itself. I made my opinions known at the time. Uh, and I did spend the last however many days since this uh phone call showing people the slides, uh, showing people the marks and the logos and they've all kind of come back with the same thing. So I'll leave my comments at that. Uh, I was underwhelmed. I feel like it misses the mark altogether, but I am one individual.
What did you think about the taglines?
I didn't argue with, with uh, you know, I think everybody really appreciated the Vermont's Neighborhood City piece of it. And I wouldn't disagree with that. I think that probably reflects pretty well who we are.
Thank you. Elaine?
Um, well, thank you to the committee. I had a lot of fun looking at these. And I agree, Concept A is my preference over, out of all of them. Um, I would prefer that we didn't use lowercase. It just gives it a too informal and a, and a less um it just, I would rather see either all caps or an initial cap on the E. Um, and then um, I, I, I love the five corners being incorporated into the logo, although at first it made me think of a Trivial Pursuit board game piece. And, but then as soon as I was like, oh, wait, that's five corners, of course. So, you know, I got it, but I showed it to a couple of people and they're like, I don't get it. So um, but I still, I, I love that it's an actual geographic place in the city that is in the logo. Um, really like that. And I like the juxtaposition of the rounded and sort of softer shape with the serif font. So um I'm pretty, I'm, I, I prefer Concept A, but I think it could be refined a little bit. Um, the other comment I will make is, I remember seeing in the feedback at Meet Me on Main, everybody refers to us as the Junction. Everybody. And so to have Essex be the bigger word seems weird. I'd rather see them the same size or maybe even make Junction bigger. Um, because when it's Essex, it makes it seem like we are still a um, a village inside the town of Essex. And so I just, you know, I feel kind of strongly about that considering how hard we worked to change that. Um, and then in terms of this taglines, I absolutely love where it all comes together. I think that's so great. The other one I liked second most was Small City Big Heart. Vermont's Neighborhood City just did not do it for me. I, I mean, I get it, but it just didn't do it for me. Um, really loved where it all comes together because it implies that we are, that we are this, kind of the center of the county. We're the transportation hub. We are the technical hub. We have, you know, and, and where we come together, we literally came together at Five Corners over the summer and it was awesome. So it just says family to me. It says community to me. So I really like that tagline very much. So, that's it. But you guys did a great job. Thank you.
Thanks, Elaine. Yeah, I, I again applaud the committee as well. I mean, I, I know you guys spent a lot of time on this, uh, as did Place. Um, I mean, I, I will say, when I saw these, I think you, you hit the nail, Ashley. You know what it is, you know what it is or you don't know what it is? And I didn't know what it was. When I read through the, the slide decks, I was like, oh, now I get it. And now sitting here, I see it even more. But I think it's an abstract vi- mind versus my literal mind and I'm literal. I'm not abstract. And so I have, I'm just struggling with that concept. I think everything that Elaine said is on point. Um, you know, about, I mean, we don't wanna, we do not want to emphasize the Essex piece of it. We do want to emphasize the Junction. The funny thing is, is when I first saw all of these, the one that stuck out to me, because I think I'm an ab- not an abstract person, is the Junction one. The Concept F. And that is literally because I was like, yep, I get that. That's who we are. So, um, but I could also see that being like J Cat too. So like, that, that's not, that's, that's not helpful either. That's the whole restaurant piece.
Tavern.
Exactly, exactly. Um, I, I guess I'm on the same, same fence with like, I would have said Small City Big Heart and that's because I think our focus is always on that Village Way. And that's what like I want to see out of it, but um, I think the question for me was, you know, we, we handed this off to the committee and I, you know, and so I, I think the preference is to, to go with what the committee suggested and then make some modifications based on what we're having for conversation tonight. Um, I guess the only thing I'm wondering is can we, we're not married to a tagline. Like the, the larger focus is the, the logo, not the tagline. So can we continue to, I think, have some discussions about the tagline and while we're refining the um uh, the, the logo itself and maybe they can show us some iterations of the where it come, all comes together, the Vermont's Neighborhood City. And you don't have to lose the, I'm, I'm a minority on the Small City Big Heart. I'm fine with that, but I think if we can see some iterations with the, with the A and G.
If you want to see Small City Big Heart, you should be able to, right?
Yeah, I like that one.
You're va- it's a valid point, for sure.
That was one of my favorites too.
Okay.
Yeah, we can definitely, the, the tagline doesn't have to be decided tonight. It's not something that um is being incorporated into the logo per se. Um, it is something that we will, you know, as part of the whole branding scheme, that's, that's part of it. Um, it's mainly what uh changes we want Place to make to the logo so that we can see the next um iteration of it. We won't bring the second iteration to you guys. It'll be the third when we bring it to you. Um, so you guys will see that the third iteration. Um, and then we will then, you'll see it at the end, basically. So um, we'll work on it just because uh it is a short, we have basically five days to turn around each of our uh, each of our ti- our concepts, so.
Do you think you got enough from us in regards to what we're looking for, for that next round?
So, and I'll just, so I didn't get to it in my memo, so I'll talk about it now. So as a committee, we said we wanted to explore um some different color palettes. So some of us really liked some of the vibrant color palettes that were in some of the other logos. So we wanted to see what that would look like with some more vibrant color palettes. Because a lot of us were drawn, obviously to Concept A, but we liked the, the colors in some of the other ones. Um, and those were the ones that came up second place within the committee as well. Um, we want to look obviously at the E, so we're looking at what that capital letter, letter E would look like. I'll add obviously the Junction, making that either bigger or making it the same size as the, as Essex. Um, and what that will look like in scale. Um, and then the other thing was we talked about adjusting um the circular frame so that it's centered. Right now, it's as, you see it as a map. So um, we thought, we wanted to see what that looked like. Um, uh, to see if that made any changes to anybody's viewpoint of it. Um, so those are kind of where we were at as a committee. We've got your change to the Junction. Is there any other things that you guys would like to see?
I think Concept A also lends itself really well to swag. You know, and you do have to think about that. I mean, that round, I, I love the idea of centering five corners in the circle, first of all, because having it off-center kind of drives me a little bananas, but um
Maybe that's my issue with it.
Maybe, yeah. Um, and it's like, it would make a great lapel pin. It would make a great beach ball. It would make a great hat. Like, like if you want to actually pursue using that logo as uh an image mark, that's a good one.
Anything else for Ashley? About changes? Uh, is there anybody in the public that wants to comment? Risa?
Thank you. Um, Ashley, I know how hard this is. I've had to do this for companies. And I greatly appreciate all the work that went into this. It is extremely easy to be a critic. I know that. When I saw A, my very first thought was Trivial Pursuit. And then I kept going along and, and then when I saw the two that had what I viewed as four corners, I was like, oh, five corners, not four corners. And I thought, well, that's, you know, I kind of like that. However, we can never close Main Street then.
Yeah.
Because we cannot lose our five corners. Because then we completely lose what Elaine said about here's our logo that gives itself to swag. It's like, yeah, but we don't have five. Um, of all of them, A is my favorite. I would rather than seeing it in a brown for the words, I would sort of like to see that deep gray that hearkens back to railroads. And, you know, that sort of um connection. I agree that Essex cannot be lowercase, even though yes, we call it the Junction. Essex needs to be a little bit stronger. When it comes to the taglines, we are not Vermont's Neighborhood City. Frankly, that's Burlington. They've got the Old North End. They've got the um North End. They've got the New North End. They've got the Sisters. They've got, it's not us. I was expecting something about us being unique. We are the only Essex Junction in the world. And I really believe we are. Not just that no one else has named that, but we are unique. So I was hoping to see something that played off of that. Um, but you know, again, it's very easy to be a critic. I know that you guys did so much work. And I'm, as a constituent, I'm so grateful to all of you for doing this and for being willing to put yourself on the firing squad line as we're all like, no, no, no. Um, in terms of centering In terms of centering that logo, which looks like five corners, my concern would be if it looks even more like a Trivial Pursuit piece. Because that, you know, it really was, you know, as Elaine said, I was like, am I really going to mention, I think it's Trivial Pursuit? I'm going to be dating myself. So thank you, Elaine, for saying it first. But great job.
Yeah, I think we just pigeonhole ourselves into not closing five corners with that. You're right. Steve?
Doesn't mean it's no longer a road.
Painted bike lanes.
We'll put green paint in the middle. Go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, so I like the first one as well, out of all of them. I agree, capital letters. Luckily you only have to change the two Es because Ss and Xs don't matter.
That's right.
But yeah, the, it was kind of hard to tell what the, what the colors were before someone said, oh, it's the five corners. At the risk of making it more complex, you could add dashed lines like in the roads. Black, black lines. The other possibility is to kind of zoom out a little bit because two-way curves are heading toward Colchester. And so that would just be like spokes. You know, we'd give, we give the distinctive shape that you see on Google Maps. And being slightly OCD, I did look and it does look like it's more or less oriented with north up, so I'm happy about that. I do like the color palette, although one of the things I, I would have maybe wanted to see is what it looks like monochrome. Because it would be monochrome in some places. And also a possibility is to use the, use the pie logo. And I guess I like pie more than the five corners, but anyway. The kind you eat, although the number is pretty cool too. That use the, the circular logo as a character. So it could be something that's to the left of the word Essex and then having a large junction underneath. So it would fill up the space. You know, Essex is larger characters because there are fewer letters than junction. And so to make it fully justified, you get, you get a bigger Essex. So as a, as one of the options, because from what I've seen, you know, in my being logo adjacent for a long time. You always have to have different options anyway, with different aspect ratios. Sometimes slightly different color palettes, monochrome, as I said. So one possibility is to have that circle to the left of the word Essex. But anyway, otherwise, you know, they're, they're pretty cool, like, you know, as everyone else, I think more or less has said, I like that one the most. I think it's, the colors are muted. It's not, it doesn't look like something on Japanese TV with, with color and, and just sort of trying to, I don't know, look sort of freaky or, or like a nightclub kind of thing, you know, like some of the more colorful ones do. But that's, that's me and my technical weirdness. So anyway, thanks.
I like the idea, I like the idea of zooming out because then you could include the crescent connector.
All right, now we're, it's nine o'clock at night. Now we're getting crazy. This is what happens every time. All right, Ashley, do you have what you need from us?
I do. I, as long as you guys are good with moving forward with concept A, that's great. I've gotten some great feedback that we can take to place to start talking to them about that. And then we can bring back some ideas with the different concepts around the tagline. And just seeing what we feel would be best with our logos.
Council, that sound good?
Sounds great. Thank you, Ashley.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
Good to see you. Thank you, Jeff and Katie as well. All right, with that, I'm going to move on to accept a motion to approve the consent agenda. All in favor? All right, that is approved. Council member comments and city manager report. Regina?
I don't have anything other than to just let folks know that you may see some scap lift on, behind me, if anybody can orient out there in the world, on the Lincoln Street side of Two Lincoln. Because we do have a chimney at the very top that is leaking. So it doesn't have anything to do with the construction whatsoever, just his life. We're going to try to get up there and get some sealant on it and then the mortar will have to be replaced in the spring. So if you see a lift, that's what it's doing.
Great. Elaine?
Nothing at this time.
Okay, Tim?
Nothing for me.
All right, I'm just going to give a quick shout out to the food drive that the city council is doing with Assistant of City Staff, that'll be December 1st, from eight thirty to three PM at the city offices. So it's to benefit Aunt Dot's and we're asking for non-perishable food items. There is a list. There's a flyer going around. I know I've posted it on Facebook. I've posted on the city sites, the non-official city site. And I believe Ashley's going to post it as well. And some hygiene products like toothpaste, shampoo, that kind of stuff. So we want to fill the trucks, so please come. And council members will also be present to answer any questions or just to shake hands, whatever works for folks. So we'll see everybody on December 1st. And then if you want to pay your water and sewer bill, that would be greatly appreciated as well. So I will entertain a motion to adjourn then. It is. Thank you as well. All right, all in favor? All right, have a good night, guys.